Okay.
Yeah.
All in favor, come on, walk. Are you ready? I'll see if I can call the meeting to order.
Be resolved that minutes of the July 18th, 2023 regular meeting of council be approved as presented.
I'm a second here. Sean, second. Anybody got any questions? All in favor, carry. Okay. Adoption of the agenda.
That be resolved with the agenda be adopted with the following addition of Brandon Hill Cemetery Grant Request.
Secretary. Comments, Ron. Anybody got any questions? Just a, I'll make it, just a comment on the first letter that's dated, I think it's got the wrong date on there. It's got December 2021. I was here when the gentleman was at the door and it was locked and it was in 22 when the COVID and all that, so just a, nothing major. Anyways, nobody else have any questions, all in favor, carry. Okay. No, it's not 7:05 yet, so we can't get into reception public hearing, right? Because you advertised at 7:05, okay, can we move on to reports of committees for a few minutes? Okay, let's move to number five, reports of committees. Resolution there, because the public hearing is scheduled for 7:05 or advertised, let's state it as scheduled. There is a resolution there under number five. Oh. You ready?
Be resolved, verbal reports of council and committee minutes of Keystone Plan Districts of July 13th, 2023, and Legislative and Finance Committee Meeting Minutes of July 31st, 2023 be accepted as presented.
Second, don't, my soul. Okay, any questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chairperson. In those one set of minutes, it lists myself, or it doesn't list myself as being an alternate. Uh, where was that?
Oh, and this is being present, that one?
Yeah.
I was wondering, Keystone Plan, no typo there. Yeah, it's there somewhere, right at the top of the minutes. As president.
It was at the top?
Yeah. I'm on there. Yeah. Actually, you know where it is, if you go to Communications.
It was Communications?
Yes, it's under Communications, which ties into this.
Sorry.
On the trailer wastewater, and it's the voting record that was sent to the CEO. Yeah, that's definitely a.
Two minutes themselves meeting, right, but there was something that I was a little.
Yeah, just give me a second here, it's here somewhere.
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring that to KPD's attention, and I'll amend it moving forward, we'll just do a quick search for your name.
Yep. Okay.
Oh, it's a, it's a ScanPDF, so I can't search it right now, but. It's in the KPD minutes?
Yes.
Yep.
The one that's sent to you there, Jordan there.
Okay, I'll let you know.
Okay. So we're gonna move over and. Didn't get a second, add council, okay, any more questions? All in favor, carry. Okay. Communications, we've got one more minute, there's a whole bunch of them that we want to.
I have a couple of seconds. What's that, you know, switching a couple of seconds?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go back up to.
Three, four, uh, four point one, four line one four. Seven oh four, we'll give him another three seconds there.
Yeah, we're good to go, okay.
Sure, the resolutions under four point one.
One, yeah. To do it. Make a motion to join the public hearing. Can I have a second, Officer Ross? Okay, any questions? And the time is all seven oh five.
Yeah.
All in favor, okay.
All right, so before council is a conditional use app, uh, application for a public hearing. Um, today's conditional use is to provide for a non-farm dwelling in the agricultural AG 80 zone. Um, you'll see in their package provided to you, in addition to their application, what their intentions are, which is George Abbey, is for a non-farm dwelling used for an existing house. So they want to basically have two houses on one property, which requires a conditional use. And then following this will be a variation for the same application, because the variation will allow for the farm site from 10 acres to 12 acres, to again allow for this construction that they're seeking. Public notice was provided and posted also on the window. Uh, I'm pretty sure the landowners is just himself, he owns all the corner sections around himself. So when you see the landowner list, it's just George and Beth. I did not receive any representation before requesting to speak. So while we're in this conditional use, does council have any questions regarding this application? Included also is, you'll see the development officer's comments under the letter to council attachment. His comments are, the applicants are the registered owners of the above noted land of 135 acres, which is located approximately six miles east of Brandon. The property currently has a dwelling, shed, and bins on it. In the opinion of the development officer, this is a condition of approval for their subdivision to separate their farmyard out of the agricultural land, and there are no concerns with this application. To ask again, does council have any questions or require additional information regarding this conditional use?
I have some questions. I, district council, if we got a chat, a conversation with Jordan there, it's development plan. Why we have to go that road, was it because he's going to be working on the farm, even though it's called non-farm dwelling? It's because of the development plan. I wish they would have, in my opinion, would have proceeded with the subdivision. I'm always a little bit leery about. To, he's always, the son's gonna build the house, but it becomes a family issue then, but they're putting in the application and those ones are always a little bit nervous to me, but anyways, the development officers say there should be no issues, so. Leave that up to council.
So four one two is the closed resolution?
Yeah, but we need to open it up to anybody in the public.
Yeah.
Yeah, is there anybody in the public that wants to speak in favor of this application? Because we have to open it up or online.
There's nobody.
Then there's nobody online, no. Is there anybody that is opposing this? Conditional use permit? Or have any questions?
I have a question, I think you're gonna dig yourselves in the graves here. When you start adding an extra dwelling on a place, you've got one, I mean, you guys have already ran into this problem, where there's a dwelling and two people using the same driveway, and then there's problems with that. So like, I don't know. I would say tread with water, I mean, I know they own the land all the way around, but what happens when they die? You know what I'm saying? What's gonna happen to that land, how is it gonna be divided? Who's gonna get the two houses? How do you sell it when you're selling two houses?
That would be the estate or somebody, I mean.
That's just kind of my, you know, like, you know, I'm not against it, I'm just saying, overall, I think you gotta look at the whole picture.
One comment that I would have, that's the person, will be big enough that it could still subdivide, be subdivided again.
Yeah, yeah, that's why, I'm just concerned, because I think we've got that problem down here on the low road. There's three dwellings on one place and they're trying to sell it and like, unless you have your bond for your son and you, you know what I'm saying? What are you gonna do there?
I can probably get, it's Vicki, I'll get Vicki's very, the person that's speaking, can you state your name and we'll record that?
Okay, Vicki Wilson.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not against, I don't wanna be, you know, but I'm just saying, overall, think before you make a decision, because we've already ran into this problem without that way. With people not getting along and using the same road and, you know, like, it's not that I'm against them doing it, it's just that I wish they could subdivide, and then you have a, you're actually getting two parcels of, you know, money from them, and if they go to sell down the road, then.
They don't have a screen.
This, just to note, um, in the, I, I don't know if it's our last set of minutes, or it might have been in June, they presented their subdivision application already to council.
Okay, so they have a subdivision going in?
Yeah, it's four one one six dash twenty-three dash eight five two two. So the subdivision process is already underway.
Okay.
I'm just trying to find which set of minutes they're in.
I thought actually it was May, but you did.
Yeah.
I was sick then, so.
It was earlier on, there's so many applications, you know, in this parcel of land, but it's a concern. That's always what I'm thinking about, but anyways, that's up to council there. Anybody else that wants to make a comment? There's nobody online. I guess if there's nobody else, we'll have a motion to, the same, make a motion to close this year, public hearing. Second, second, and then Council Brown, Council Ross, okay, all in favor, close here, okay? Now we're at four point one one point three, right? Yeah, okay, oh, there's a motion in front of you there. Four point one point three.
Whereas the applicants, George and Beverly Abbey, and landowner George Abbey, the property you described as Northwest 3610 18W, Row Number 104000, Rural Municipality of Cornwallis, has applied to the Council of the Rural Municipality of Cornwallis for approval of a conditional use order under Part Five, Table Five Dash Two of the Cornwallis zoning bylaw. Number 1664 slash O three slash 2016, as amended in order to provide for non-farm dwelling in the agricultural general AG 80 zone. After careful consideration of the application and any representations made for or against of the Council of the Rural Municipality of Cornwallis, in a meeting duly assembled on the 15th day of August 2023, approve the said application.
Can I have a second, Officer Ron? Any discussion?
So it's gonna get subdivided?
What's that?
It is gonna get subdivided?
Yeah, the subdivision number is four one one six dash twenty-three dash eight five two two.
Okay, on the next, like, that's the next step of the process, yeah. Yeah. But, anybody else, any questions? Okay, I'll call for a question, all in favor, okay? Moving on. Okay.
So next will be four two line, you know.
There's a motion there. Motion to go into public hearing. That, that's your motion?
Second, yeah.
Counselor Brown. Okay, any questions, all in favor? Okay, we're back into a public hearing. The motion is there.
All right, so as previously indicated, so this variance is also part of this subdivision that we just, we're talking about regarding the conditional use. Uh, this variance is to increase the site area for a non-farm dwelling from 10 acres to 12 acres. And once again, I did not receive any applications for or against, written, registered for. Advertisement was done the same way as a conditional use with advertisements put out on our window and landowners contacted. It's, well, I got for this variant, I can read off, I guess, the development officer's comments again. In the opinion of the development officer, this variation is part of the conditional approval of subdivision four one one six dash twenty-three dash eight five two two, removing the existing yard out of agricultural land, and in his opinion, there are no issues with this variance.
Okay, I'll ask, anybody in the audience there or online speaking in favor of this variance application? Anybody against it? Council have any more questions? Okay, I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Counsel Brown, long sit, I'll have a second there. Counsel Maxwell. Okay, the public hearing is closed, well. Four point one point three is the resolution.
Oh, sorry, I got one.
Yeah, I did scroll down, yeah. The. Four point two point three.
I got one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Right, for the closing of the public, my mistake, sorry for that. Carry. Yeah. On the variance, the motion is.
Yeah.
I, yeah.
Where has the absence George of Beverly and Abbey and the landowner George Abbey of the property legally described as Northwest 3610 18, Row Number 104000. Room and Spal of Cornwallis had applied to the Council of the Aron Cornwallis Variation Board to vary the application of the Cornwallis Municipality Zoning Bylaw Number 1664 slash zero three slash 2016, as amended under Part Five, Table Five Two, in order to vary the established requirements in accordance with the following description, variation request, increase the site area for a non-farm dwelling from 10 acres to vary to 12 acres. And after careful consideration of the application and representations made for or against the variations sought by the applicant, the Council of the Aron Cornwallis, Cornwallis Variation Board, in a meeting duly assembled, assembled on the 15th of August 2023, approve or reject the said variations. So you want to approve, rate your motion?
Approve it, okay. Can I have a second, Counsel Maxwell? Anybody else?
I have a question, Mr. Chairperson. Uh, in the original resolution there, four point one point three, the legal land description was described as Northwest 3610 18 West, whereas in this resolution, it's being described as Northwest 3610 18.
What's missing, W?
Just Mr. W.
Oh, okay, well, I know.
Oh, yeah.
So.
West of the primary, yeah?
Yeah, okay. So you're gonna change, add it to this one?
Yeah.
So we'll need a friendly amendment, is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's okay with the friendly amendment, and Counsel Maxwell is okay with the second, okay? Okay, any other question? All in favor, carry. Did five already, so. Yeah, we did five, we're on to number seven, we got no, nothing, no reception or petitions, so number seven, communication. With the motion be resolved that the communications be received as presented. Second, second, any questions required? Done, okay, all in favor? Carry. Like that one letter, the funding. Okay, number eight. Eight point one, there's a resolution.
Be resolved, the Council of the Aron Cornwallis to hereby adopt and approve the list of accounts for expenses for checks number 11449211504, for a total amount of $558,127.42. And further be resolved, the Council of the Aron Cornwallis hereby adopt and approve payroll and council indemnities and expenses for the amount of $53,073.15.
I have a second there. Counsel Ross.
Okay, so just kind of run through the list of accounts of $558,000. You'll note that there was two very large checks cut, and that was our gravel amount. So that's about $410,000 out of that $558 figure. So that was our annual gravel budget, in addition. We, there's also a $26,000 check to Netherhill Farms, and that's from council authorizing the release of the Netherhill subdivision, $25,000. Um, and those are really the only main items that really jump out. But as always, if you guys have any questions, just note the check number, and you can ask me, and I can always provide you additional information as well.
Thanks, CEO. Uh, there's one very large one there, $4,054 from Rawns Appliance.
Uh, we have to pay for the freon to be removed at the waste transfer stations. People will remove or leave products that require freon, and we have to pay for that freon to be removed before it can be collected as scrap metal.
Yeah, so that's a pretty hefty one, $4,000. Anybody else got any questions or? Yeah, if not, I'll ask a question, all in favor, carry. Okay. On the eight point two.
Be resolved that the Council of the Aron of Cornwallis hereby accept the unaudited financials as of June 30th, 2023, and July 31st, 2023, as presented.
Have a second there. Counsel Brown.
Okay, so I appreciate your patience with me last month, I'm holding off on the June 30th financials, so today we're adopting both the June and July ones. I'll kind of focus my discussion on just the July ones. So you'll notice, uh, on the unaudited financials of July, the first kind of page, general operating fund balance sheet, you'll see our cash on deposit has gone down to $419,000. So again, uh, the way the municipality operates is we spend all our money and then you get your taxes kind of near the end of the year. So right below cash on deposit of $400,000, you'll see the accounts receivable tax assets. So that's money that still has to come in. Now, of course, uh, two thirds of that is going to be school division funds. Um, but taxes are out now, people are coming in and paying them. If you want to know what we have to pay the school divisions, I'll just refer you to kind of page two of the balance sheets under liabilities. It'll say accounts payable, and then each of the school divisions. And then that is payable in three installments in the months of November, December, and January. November, we have to pay the percentage of the volume of taxes collected. December, any taxes we collected then, and then January, you have to pay up the school division regardless if you have any outstanding taxes. Um, as this council is aware, you guys didn't do a tax sale last year for this year. So then I'm probably going to engage services with tax service and bring it forward to council to initiate a tax sale year for next year for properties in arrears of 2021 and 2022. So then that way, even if there are outstanding taxes, which means we've already paid the education levy on, you'll get that collection back when it goes through the tax sale process. And then sliding over into statement of revenue and expenditures, you'll see the first line in the revenues is our tax levy. So we got our taxes in, um, it's higher than what the budget is, but that's because I haven't gone through and smoothed everything out yet. So an easy example is just a couple lines below, it says granted lieu federal of 901,000, and currently it's 898,000, um, over budget. So you slide those two out, and then there's only difference of $3,000. So just keep that in mind. And as always, if you have any questions about the contents of any of these line items, just take, uh, take note of the account numbers and shoot me an email, and I'll certainly supply you with additional information as well. Um, some of the conditional grant lines currently have $0, but that's just because the corporation's pretty slow right now on receiving electronic fund deposits. The money is likely in the bank account, but we just haven't gotten to a point in the bank reconciliation process yet in identifying these revenues and then recording them. And now that we have a financial analyst again, these are all, uh, great learning opportunities for her, rather than just, here's one month worth, we kind of apply ourselves and work towards it. So you'll continue to see in the August financials and in the September financials, a lot more of a smoothing uh, across a lot of the revenues and then those budget lines.
Mr. Wilner, as we discussed before the meeting started here, uh, I inquired about obtaining this report in a generalized format as opposed to, uh, line item itemized like that. On a go-forward basis, are we gonna start to receive the report that way?
Yeah, I certainly can, I just need to sort it by the department codes. So that's where 10 is our general operating fund, and then the next four digits is the department code, and I just need to set that in the report. I can, um, certainly do that moving forward.
Okay.
And then those are really the main items right now. It's gonna get really busy around the office, it's already starting to get busy around the office with people paying their taxes, and we're gonna be seeing a lot of money come in and just keep depositing it.
I have one, if nobody else. I know this is the way the province sets up these accounts, Mr. Wilner, but you referred to page two, which is fair, it's on page two, but if you go through that report, I'm already on three times, it's page one, is there a way we can correct that? So when you refer to page one, we know it's page one.
Yeah, instead of, yeah, because the cover page is an actual page.
Just see, we can do that, then when you say page seven, we can all go to page seven versus looking at three.
Eight or, yeah.
Well, there's three page sevens or three page ones, so.
Oh, on the top right-hand corner of the report, yeah, yeah.
So it.
Yeah, I can actually take a pen and write in the bottom corner, too.
That'd be great, thanks a lot. It's always confusing, because when you just mentioned page two, I went to page two, and it's something totally different. Yeah, anybody else have any?
Yeah, I just want to add one, one more comment. Uh, when we were going through our budget process, Mr. Wilner made a comment about, uh, province giving those tax rebates, I just want to remind everybody that, uh, as those rebates come in, they get issued the month of the tax bill going out.
Correct, so in September, everyone who's eligible for the education property tax advance will be receiving 50% of the education levy that's on their tax bill.
So we encourage them to, when they get it, bring it in, and there's half your education tax on your, your tax bill right there.
That's actually really the point, is that something, Mr. Wilner, that we could put on our, on the homepage? Like an education, um.
Yeah, we can encourage it, because that's what we stuffed in the envelope of every tax bill.
Yeah.
Is the province provides us with a little brochure, but we can remind people next month that these checks are coming and what the check is for.
Yeah. Yeah.
So how does, what's, what's the farm, the farm land, the farmers, they have to actually.
Pay the full amount.
They pay the full amount, and then they, they receive like, 50% of the tax, the school tax money afterwards, up here. Yeah, there's a lot of paperwork.
Yeah, we have a little poster in the lobby about that, but again, you can always promote that next month as well. Any other questions regarding the unaudited financials? Okay, and like I said, as always, you can always just write down the account number, anything your questions on.
Nobody else, I'll call for the question, all in favor. Nobody else, I'll call for the question, all in favor. Okay, carry.
So we have no bylaws scheduled for tonight.
Unfinished business number ten. So at the end of the day, ten point four will be the next thing on the act.
Yeah, the, we have to advertise the amending bylaw for rezoning of both of those that we introduced a couple months ago. Um, we didn't receive it back from the province in time to meet the advertising requirements. So those will come up at the next council meeting. So yeah, we're at kind of ten point four, City of Brandon Fire and Emergency Services.
That's still the action items that, that's sitting under unfinished business. There's a motion there, somebody wants to.
I'll make the motion where as the Brandon Fire and Emergency Services. Has requested a shared portable tank at the approximate cost of four thousand dollars. To be shared amongst the RM Cornwallis, the RM of Eldon and the City of Brandon. Therefore, be resolved that the council of the RM of Cornwallis hereby approved the request from Brandon Fire. For the purchase of the portable tank with all costs being borne by the operating fund.
Any questions on that? We discussed that at the last meeting.
Yeah, once, once it's all purchased and everything will also.
Yeah, okay, on the favor. Yeah, carry. Ten point five.
Be resolved, council of the RM Cornwallis to instruct the CEO to amend the insurance coverage of the chair hall to. The agreed value of.
Okay, wait, I can give you guys a little bit of explanation.
Yeah.
So last meeting, we brought forth that Western Financial Group Insurance Solutions did uh, an inspection review. On the chair hall and at that time. They advise council that they basically need to move to either a depreciated value or an agreed upon value. Um, both values being set at a hundred thousand cost the same amount. So depreciated value means they view that building worthing, worth a hundred thousand dollars. So if something were to happen to it, it's insured to a hundred thousand. And agreed value is meaning you accept that it might be worth more than a hundred thousand. But you're agreeing to only insure it up to a maximum of a hundred thousand.
It'll be resolved with council of the RM of Cornwallis to instruct the CEO to amend the insurance coverage. On the chair hall to depreciate value of one hundred thousand dollars.
Second. Okay, any questions? Good explanation here. No more questions, all in favor? Carry.
Whereas the CEO requested assistance with the distribution of receptive pumps with the channel pressure sewer system in the form of plumbing permits. And whereas the project would include the issuing of plumbing permits for the installation of new pumps to be installed on every property within chair within. With the property owner being responsible for obtaining their permit prior to the pumps being released for installation on the property. And whereas the Keystone planning board has approved the proposal with the charge of twenty five dollars per low pressure system plumbing permit. Thereby, therefore be resolved with the council of the RM Cornwallis hereby agree to the terms and conditions. And delegate the LPS plumbing permitting process to Keystone Planning District.
Okay, so with this process, um. We were trying to identify how to distribute the volume of pumps in an organized manner. And then also with respect to Manitoba assessment, being aware that these improvements were made. So talking with KPD, the plumbing permitting system would be the solution to that where Manitoba, when you pull a permit. Then when you complete that permit, that permit then gets notified to Manitoba assessment that work has been completed. So this plumbing permit serves two purposes. It alleviates the administration of these plus fifty pumps off of our office during tax season. And it goes to Keystone Planning District. And then in the same sense, once these permits are completed and the utility operator build wire confirms that connections are made. The permit is closed and the Manitoba assessment is made aware that these properties. Now have a low pressure sewer system which will likely increase their property assessment. We took it to the board, their plumbing permit was seventy dollars. I said seventy is way too high, so. The plumbing charge rate that they were okay with was twenty five.
At the end of the day, basically a, a process, a check and balance because there's two different pumps out there. And they'll have the list which one requires a submersible and which one requires one in the, in the basement. So when that plumber comes, they're the homeowner. Their engineer has identified which pump they need and it's paid for by the project. Yeah, but one, one concern that's out there right now, people. And just for every, for council's information. The project called for was agreed by council, we gave water services board and. The engineer, the direction to. The hose, the discharge hose from the tank needs to be within ten feet and every hose is within ten feet out there now. Lockhart, it sounds like it's going to be doing a lot of the work. He'd like to start his understanding and talk to a home, about homeowners. But they haven't been given any specifications. The office, I do believe, has the specifications for what fittings, there's special fittings. There's bulkhead fittings, they need to be put on order. Outfit like Lockhart needs to be made aware, how many he needs to order. That's missing in this resolution. I'll talk to Brad tomorrow. In my opinion, and even the engineer and water services board, the excavation work can be done up to the tank. The plumbing permit, I think is a good idea, it's a check and balance. That can be done at a later date, but right now there's sixty homes, you don't want to wait till. It's gets commissioned, which could be October, then you have all that excavation on sixty tanks, you're going to be talking cold weather. Where in my case, my hose is within eight, ten feet, I could hire a contractor if there was a process in place. But that, that has some in discuss, so I'll, let me talk to Brad tomorrow. And I might have to call a special meeting or something because the, there's two contractors that are raring to go. To take the hose up to the tank, the pumps can't get issued, water service board will inform Jordan. His commission, that's when the pumps can start getting released and Jordan can give Keystone Planning. But right now, people are getting antsy and sore contractors, they want to get going to bring the hose up to the tank. And I, I had the specifications with me, but I put it on the wrong, in the wrong folder when I came tonight. So I'll talk to Brad tomorrow to see if we can uh, get a process going because that process should be uh, fairly simple. One thing water service board is saying is what they need to, homeowners can't go rent a backhoe. It has to be done by a licensed um, qualified plumber like Lockhart or down on Bullock, Cryway. Whoever they want to get, but that, that portion is the homeowners, that's their cost.
Mister Chairperson, when this project was commissioned, uh, and we had the public hearing, uh, what was the expectation? For them to enter into this agreement to, 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 to allow the, the low pressure system to. Like, was it disclosed to the homeowners at that time that there would be a small portion that they would be responsible for? Outside of what they're already going to be paying for?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, that was right, that, that was. Almost like a lengthy discussion because there's so many variables out there, tanks and underneath decks. Instead of, so the council agreed with water services board and the engineer. Bring the hose within ten feet of the tank.
So that's what the requirement was, ten feet of the.
And within ten feet, it's in the contract, I'm pretty sure it's three meters or ten feet. Yeah, but the expectation was there. Yeah, some are going to be really easy, some are gonna have to. Basically decks are gonna have to be.
Fair enough, but that's got nothing to do with uh, charging twenty five dollars to issue a pump.
But no, but right now, they, they haven't been given the go ahead. To take the hose that's second underground to connect.
Right, it, it is a checkbox, it's a, it's a process.
It, it is, but there's nothing in place there, Terry. That's a, Councilor Ross, that's a, a real good process. So I'll talk, stop it at the office tomorrow and uh, see what we can do because those contractors, if he's ready to go. There should be no reason, those homeowners cannot hire the qualified contractor and get that hose connected to the tank. Because people want to get, get their lawns excavated before it frees up, because there's going to be sixty of them. Now, any other questions? And there's a reason it's important because the homeowners need to notify their contractor. There's specialty fittings in that hookup and in all fairness to the, to the contractors, they. The homeowners need to pick that contractor so they can order the stainless steel valve, the, the, the ball valve and all that. They're not on the shelf in brand, those are specialized items. When you're talking fifty to sixty, it might be a long, long lead time. Okay, and nobody else has any question? Call for the question, all in favor?
I, I missed this eleven point two isn't required. No. Okay, we are going to, I'm going to ask council to allow. Can we skip eleven point two and, and go to?
Take a look, Terry, what? Do you want to table it?
Well, just have, give us a sec here.
You were involved in the discussions there.
Yeah, yeah, but that's not what's, it was here earlier, I don't remember. Yeah, eleven point four is the only one we need to action.
Oh, okay, because we're not at the point of a deadline yet to worry about the extension?
No.
Okay.
So eleven point four?
So we'll just.
So table eleven point three.
No, eleven point two, we're just going to clear. It's not an active item for you guys.
Okay. No action.
No.
Okay, so eleven point two, no action, so we're eleven point three.
Be resolved that council of the RM Cornwallis hire and appoint the following, uh, Kayla Porter as financial analyst and Michelle. Uh, De Baroka as administrative assistant, assistant effective Auguste twenty twenty three.
Counselor Maxwell, second. Any questions?
Okay, eleven point four, where is a cautionary agreement for the approach? Uh, on the Campbell's pasture adjacent to the Trans-Canada Industrial Park. Uh, therefore be resolved, council of the RM Cornwallis hereby agree to assume a third of the cost of the materials. Of the approach and agree to supply a thirty foot culvert.
Second. Counselor Ron, anybody have any question?
I will just uh, give everybody, I sent everybody an email on that, but I'll, I'll talk about it a little bit more. Um, Mister Campbell had access to the, uh, to his pasture. Uh, then the Trans-Canada Industrial Park uh, came to be. They had a berm constructed or originally planned for the west side of their, their road. Uh, then through a process, they had it moved to the east side of the road. As a result, Mister Campbell lost access to his pasture. Um, working with the developer, uh, Mister Keller. Uh, and Mister Campbell, the property owner, we have come to an agreement where uh. You know, it, it's described in, in the, in the, uh, the, the email that I sent to you guys. Uh, but basically, uh, Mister Campbell will mark out where he wants the approach. Uh, we'll provide the culvert, uh, Mister Keller will provide the, the materials there to build the approach and Mister Campbell will, will build the approach.
Oh, okay. When, like he's going to have a elevations and all that provided to him, we're like to know where the culvert needs to be. Set to, who's going to install the culvert, he will?
Uh, yeah, we'll, we'll deliver it and he'll install.
Okay, but he's going to be, somebody's going to direct him where to set the elevation, like.
Yeah, there will be, uh, Mister, Mister Keller is going to be providing the engineered plans.
Okay, good, okay. So that's the one, there, one, there. Originally, when I read that, I thought there should be no money, but if he volunteered to. Rent a bobcat or whatever, to do the work, I'm okay with it. Because in all fairness, we took his access away and the berm is now forcing us to build another.
Well, we can always, uh, I think the deadline isn't till October, because we can always bring it back in September.
Yeah, we had that discussion before. Anybody have any other questions? He needs to get, like you say, access to his pasture.
Yeah, he's got cattle on it now. Um, he's going to wait to look at, oh, get something else.
Nope, that's fair. Anybody else, any questions? All in favor? Carry. Good, thank you for taking care of that, Terry.
So the next item, uh, I require some direction on council. So as you're aware about the special service levy for garbage and recycling, uh, we got to get rolling on this. So the first step is getting some direction on council regarding. Um, whether or not you're declaring an area as a special service levy area. Or you are going to provide opportunity to every rate payer. Both the option to either opt in or opt out of garbage and recycling services. Um, something to also keep in mind is if you're establishing it as an area, take into account subdivisions that are complete. To which you will be seeing residences being constructed in. Because, um, I can't remember, you guys were kind of looking at like a five year agreement, right? For your next garbage and recycling contract?
And the reason it was five years, the last one was five years because it was recommended by the CEO. And the companies that did um, provide a tender, a tender, because of the cost of the bins, they recommended five years.
So then again, um, keep those development areas in mind as well because. Administratively recommendation is to just have it as a special service levy area. And then you'll have your public hearing and you can hear if there's a lot of opposition. But it should be almost like the special service levy, which makes it mandatory for everyone to receive garbage and recycling services. For multiple reasons. Um, we have people coming in saying, well, the last person didn't get garbage collection, but I moved in and now I want it. So we've been adding those people into collection this year. But keep that in mind, if you're going into a five year agreement, yes, sure, there's options to add the occasional one, two person. But it might be more difficult if you see a residential development be completed and then all of a sudden there's fifteen more houses. That might alter the terms and conditions of the tender in the agreement because these guys are trying to mathematically work out. What twenty twenty four to twenty twenty nine garbage and recycling services would cost. So that's kind of what I need to do first is get direction from you guys if we're going to poll every rate pair and allow them to opt in or out. Or declare the areas as garbage and recycling special service collection areas. And then from there, we'll obviously have the information and then um. I can proceed with tendering so we can get this all in place. I spoke with the municipal board, again, they're saying get your special service levies in by February at the absolute latest. But realistically, you should be getting them in around January. Because of the delays of the municipal board when it comes to borrowing bylaws and special service levies and items like that. So we're gonna, we're gonna be on a time crunch with the chatter adventure and all that stuff. Because I need the invoice from the Manitoba Water Services Board to initiate that one. But I figure right now is a good time to get direction from council about the special service levy for garbage and recycling. So moving forward into January first, twenty twenty four, you guys can select your um, chosen contractor. After reviewing all received bids and then we can get it on to the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty nine tax bill.
You want to read it, the resolution, do you?
Well, no, well, I have a question, I assume it's an opt in, opt out now?
No.
It isn't, okay. So you were saying people come in and said, somebody didn't have it and I want it.
Yeah, which is, they probably constructed or they could be in an area close by. They're seeing everybody else get garbage, so they want it.
Well, just a question to, I got no one, there's new, after the contract was signed and Chader when new houses got built. They would ask me, so I would send them into administration and they were put on the list, is that not doable anymore then, or what?
Well, it is, but we have to be careful if we're gonna be doing subdivisions where we're seeing fifteen houses get put in. Or in locations where there, I don't know if you guys have any subdivisions on the go right now that would be requiring garbage and recycling that currently don't get it, that you.
Chader was there, there's eight extra homes, that's about the only one in Spuce Woods, I don't think we got anything pressing right now.
Grand Valley doesn't have any garbage pickup there, so at this present time.
So.
So you guys are kinda just looking to replicate the same special service levy areas?
That's what we were thinking when we were, correct, I'm wrong, counsel, but only we're basically, last year when we went through this. Thinking just, let's get another five-year contract.
Okay.
We were thinking doing the same thing, but.
So I would kind of follow the direction left behind in the last ten room then?
Can, but, for example, you take those twenty empty lots in Chader, they wouldn't have to pay until they get the bins, right? There's no houses there, so would that lot have to pay?
Yes, as a special service levy, you have to declare that whole area as.
Well, how come they didn't do the last one? How did it, how was it done?
Because they probably weren't listed in that special service area. Which again, we don't have to include those vacant lots in that special service area, right? We can choose. It's not like it's a broad flashlight on the wall at night.
Okay, that's a good point, so let's say three houses get built, can they come in and see administration say we're, we've got a rock industry firm now, can we get two bins out there because the truck's driving right by, is that all?
Yeah.
Available, I think that's good, I think that's fair.
And is there any other areas within the rural municipality you guys would like to see collection services expanded to?
I wish we had a little bit more time and I know we talked about it before, there's a little, what I call it cluster in the southwest corner there, there's about thirty residents within, I'm gonna say, four miles and Grand Valley, I I think we did a poor job advertising last time, I'm just wondering if we shouldn't try that again. And the reason I'm saying that, the cost of running that transfer station. Like when I, today I signed some checks, it's getting pretty costly. And I'm thinking if we could get people to, if we could properly advertise to buy into this and explain to them, like I think in Chader, I'm speak for myself, I'm not, can't speak for Shane. Uh, who's, I think you're included as well, for twenty dollars a month, it's, I can't drive to the dump at the cost of gas. I would really like us to, if we have time, Mr. Wilmer, to look at that condensed areas, if even Patricia Avenue, just to see.
We can, you can have an area to attend, is what you're saying, you just don't wanna try and get every single house.
No.
Because that's pretty hard for every single ratepayer.
Well, yeah, because there is ratepayer dissatisfaction with some of the services currently being received. But then again, that gets dangerous, because they say no, but they can sell their house within the next five years and the next person comes in and then they say, well, I want it. It's like, well, no, wait a second, you weren't paying towards this for the last three years.
See, and and also for Grand Valley, they've been approached twice. Probably in the last five or six years and really don't get any response.
I've never received anything in my mailbox.
And it was actually Counsel Ross that brought to my attention, we were supposed to nail it out, I'm saying, do a, but we gotta put a letter together with some numbers on there, just encourage people to think about it and when Mr. Ross mentioned to me, he never got a notice. And those people out there right now, when I talked to the contractor, what, a year ago? They're paying him to to do that service and he pays for the tipping fees in Brandon. That's not fair, because at the end of the day, Cornwall should be paid for the tipping fees, but that's, that's what I'm thinking, we would put the right newsletter out there, that there's gonna, could be an information meeting, we could have a one-hour explanation meeting, I think there's an opportunity here for, to reduce that traffic at our transfer stations, that's gonna be a something that we're gonna have to look at, it's getting pretty costly to operate.
My concern right at the moment is, are we gonna miss the window for getting all this in place if we have to have public hearings for Grand Valley or wherever else? And are we gonna miss that window and the RM's gonna be paying for everybody garbage picked up like we did this year?
I think we need to tender and procure a better service.
One?
Tender and procure a better service for the people who are currently receiving this service, there there's as Mr. Wilmer identified, there's tons of complaints.
And so that's where I want to know if you guys were wanting to expand the potential service areas then?
But will expanding it just cause more problems if we don't put in that tender and out or something, though, like last winter was absolutely horrendous. Um, that we did, in all fairness to ratepayers, we did receive two sealed envelopes last November. And I've asked, I told the CEO, the intern, keep the envelopes closed until we're gonna move ahead. And they're probably still on your desk there, I'm not sure if they've been opened up.
Oh, yeah, you you can open tenders as soon as they're received past the deadline and I brought it to council's attention what the dollar amounts were. Is it way too late to get it through the municipal board?
So at a later date, I'd say in twenty twenty-five, Grand Valley wants to be in the catchment for pickup. That can be put into the system and it'll just end up being another cost, I guess, of, for the contract.
Yeah, but then, yeah, we should notify or at least indicate what that potential would be in the tender itself. And then council would need to do another special service levy bylaw to collect those funds on the tax bills of those new residences.
So when the tender goes out, it could actually, you said that a year or two down the road, Grand Valley, Patricia Avenue, uh, might wanna come on on board.
Yeah, I just need to kinda get an idea of.
See, you want room for expansion in the contract, and what you're saying that we we identify thirty more to add in, we can have that ability to add it in and change the bylaw and then contract it's a quarter again.
Okay, then I can always, uh, I'll write up the the tender then, and get the tender rolling with that kind of direction. And bring it to you guys hopefully in September, so you guys can have a good chance to look through it. And any other?
So this will be all in, but with no opt-out? Is that right?
Correct, we'll only supply to houses with residences on them in the already pre-established special service areas. And then in the tender two, we will also indicate that there is a potential over this five-year period to expand those service areas of Grand Valley and Patricia Avenue. And then should there be an appetite for that, then we'll work with the contractor and the municipal board and update the special service levy to include those areas as well.
You know, I I can live with that, what? I would extend, it it'd be Richmond Avenue and uh
Yeah.
Fifty in the area.
I do.
I think last time we counted, I sat down with the CEO, there was about thirty potential homes in that southwest corner plus Patricia, so yeah, if you want to proceed with that. But I agree, uh, once you have that tender, I can even call a quick special meeting to get it rolling.
Okay.
Because I agree with Counsel Brown, December's gonna be here, no time, we need to have that public hearing, I'd like to have it in as early as November, to be honest with you. There's a lot of complaints here in the last couple of years. Okay. So. So for you, Mr. Wilmer, what do you wanna see in that resolution?
I read the way it is now. If you can refresh.
I did.
Refresh it one more time, just to make sure.
I'll do it one more time. Be resolved with the council, the rural municipality of Cornwallis hereby direct this chief administrative officer to begin tendering and procurement for the special service of garbage and recycling collection for all properties identified within the service area. And by including the potential service areas of Grand Valley and Richmond Avenue in future years of the agreement.
I'm gonna have a second, I'm gonna scroll in. Any question? All in favor? Carry.
I put municipal office and heating and cooling on the agenda. But at this time, we don't really have an action item, it was brought forward by the Transportation Committee, because this is kind of Public Works Manager Shane's project. So once he gets rolling and we can start looking at moving forward with blocking out some of these forty-year-old windows. And what kind of expenses are gonna be incurred and what kind of funding opportunities are available, then we'll bring it forward. I was just a little more ambitious than time allowed this time.
And everybody, all that, we can feel the air conditioner is semi-working, a lot better than plus twenty-seven in the morning. Okay, so we'll, no action on that one today, okay?
Whereas Rail Safety Week is to be held across Canada from September eighteenth to the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Therefore be resolved, the council of the arm of Cornwallis hereby proclaim support to the National Rail Safety Week held from September eighteenth to the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Sure.
Counsel Maxwell, he had his arm up first.
I don't know if you guys have done many proclamations, but these come through once in a while to councils, so.
Anybody have any questions? All in favor? Carry. Eleven point eight.
Be resolved with the council, the arm of Cornwallis hereby request unsightly property enforcement on the lots within the subdivision known as the Meadow Sub Chader.
And a second. No second, means no action.
So this is just grass?
Yeah, he's not wanted, like. I'll have a second and I can explain what's happening up there.
No, second question.
Counsel Brown. And I'll explain, I emailed the CEO. I've been getting a lot of texts, a lot of phone calls, and when I'm in my front yard, people walking by. The twenty-some empty lots there, for the last number of years. The CEO got Livingston landscaping to uh a cut, and my understanding is she backcharged it on the taxes or somehow recouped the money. After talking to the CEO, I guess it's not, not as easy as uh as just putting out the taxes. So right now out there, the lots are just looking really, really bad and rodents are starting to move in, skunks and gophers and mice and you name it. And uh, I think we need to give the CEO the, go ahead to take whatever action needs to get those lots cut. Get over the developer. I think Counsel Ross wrote through there, right?
Yeah, yeah, um, regardless if it's long grass or short grass, you're still gonna have rodents, so.
Yeah.
I uh, I I live on an acreage and my grass is maintained and I have mice and and squirrels and gophers and.
Yeah.
You have a skunk?
Yeah, like I, I think the rooms are talking about is the skunks, it's all like two, three feet right in the middle of town, so. Just something, and I've reached out to the developer, he says he'll get over Livingston, that was about ten days ago, I still haven't seen Livingston out there.
Do we have a bylaw that?
I don't, I don't know if we do or not, I.
There is an unsightly property, because Keystone Plan District has been talking about it a bit too. I haven't found it, but but I also haven't found your guys' fees and charges bylaw yet, so.
Like the last two or three years, the place looked like a park, because there was a gentleman that lived there. That's all he did all summer long, he did a great job, I guess, to get out of the house, but now he's moved to Altona. And now the place just looks like a weed field. Anyways. No, anybody has any question, I'll call for the, call for the question.
How are you gonna enforce that?
How are you gonna enforce with the bylaws?
Well, I'll notify um Darren, we'll have to look at this unsightly bylaw, yeah.
Well, I would say then, so picking up the phone, call, telling Livingston to mow it. Send the bill and charge it to those properties, can't be done.
That's not a good practice, no, because you can't just pick contractors, well, I guess, we have.
No, I mean, he's under, he's out there anyways, he's mowing the lawn or the grass right across the street, Livingston.
Yeah, that's under a roadside mowing contract, though. Yeah.
It's just bit of a nightmare, anyway.
Really asking for it, unsightly property enforcement on lots.
Well, do you guys have a property standard bylaw, it's fifteen sixty-four, twenty twenty? So you do have a, and it does say, you know, weeds or, uh, I think it's most RMs adopted it more for when people would have uh unregistered vehicles and items like that to prevent the piling up of a bunch of vehicles, but you guys definitely have a property standard bylaw. And um, and the authority to enforce within it. Uh, the bylaw provisions require the land and improvements be kept and maintained in a clean, safe condition. The parking and storing of vehicles, including the number and type of vehicle being stored. Removal of topsoil and activities or things that are in the opinion of council are or could become a nuisance, which include noise, weeds, odors, unsightly property, fumes and vibrations.
Yeah, when I read that, I don't think that was intended for empty residential lots, in my opinion. That's more for like vehicles and all that, we're not talking vehicles here, we're just saying it for a minute, two and a half feet of grass. Get them covered, that's it.
So there's a whole process where he has to be given written notice and then if he contravenes and then there's there's steps laid out right in the bylaw and you can appeal it to the CAO and then the council. The council shall determine and appeal within five days of its hearing after such and.
So December will be here, so there's no action this year, you know, all that takes time.
Yeah.
Cover the snow by that.
What's that?
Covering the snow by.
Yeah, we could try for next year. There's one out on Cody Drive that we always um, we we maintain it there right in there, beside Sean Elders.
Oh, yeah.
Like, that one's unsightly as well, but we always used to send Livingston out there. The last time I was out there, it hasn't been mowed yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, just something, something to keep in mind when you got.
If you're uh driving by thirty, on Thirty-Fourth Street past uh Breckwood, there's all kinds of vacant lots that are you know, thistles, if this is just grass, it's grass, right? Nothing seems to be done in City of Brandon either.
Okay, but, well, I'll call for the question, all in favor? Can you oppose? Okay. Okay, I'll do the next one. There's a motion there, if not, no action, whatever, but eleven point nine.
Whereas the July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three Legislative Finance Committee meeting, it was recommended that request a purchase, four hundred Richmond Avenue East, brought to council for decision, therefore be resolved, the council of the arm of Cornwallis hereby. hereby agree to engage in discussions with Ed Dorn regarding the sale of four hundred Richmond Avenue East, known as the Richmond Transfer Station.
Agree to engage, just engage it.
Just agree to engage.
Okay, can we have a second? I'll all second if you get it on the floor.
Like anything, when you sell a house, when you buy a new house, it's gonna cost more money. If we sell the land that our waste transfer station is on, that's gonna cost us more to build a new one.
Well, actually, I'll add here, like, he wants, that's why he wants to come in and discuss it. We might tell him, well, we're not gonna sell anything. Like.
Can we amend, can we amend that to be agree to engage in discussions with Ed Dorn regarding the sale lease of four thousand? That should be four thousand, Richmond Avenue.
Well, actually, I'm glad, actually, Counselor Ron, he, when he called me down there, he did say he's open to anything we want. He, he was even open to the idea he would build us something for, and we talked, talked about that yesterday, to properly get to those dumpsters. Like, it's a real challenge for us right now. I didn't agree to anything. I just said, let's bring him in here to discuss it. Maybe he's willing to put us a concrete pad there or something, or easy access. He, he did mention leasing. He did, and that big gravel pile there, he's open to I, I say gravel, he says it's gravel. He said Emil told him it's some part material. He's willing to, to discuss with us. Teddy buy it because he needs it for the back, right? He needs a large storage area for those styrofoam domes, or forms, I should say. So like, at the end of the day, I think sitting down with him and see what's his intentions. But I, I think giving it up right now would be a little bit dangerous or challenging. But if he's willing to lease some property in the back there, post the rails, we might be, be able to cash in, there's some funding there.
See, the last time they wanted property, we had to do a subdivision to allow them to buy a certain amount. And they agreed to pay so much for some gravel too, but it was a win-win at the time, but I think it's getting that, you say there's a big amount of gravel there, but going back thirty or forty years ago, that's where we had dug, it was pits dug to burn garbage in, so you know, that was allowed at that time. This is before I was on council, but you might get into a new can of worms if.
Yeah, but it's just for discussion. That would come up in the discussion at once, because yeah, you're right, historically, who knows what's in the ground.
I, I could open that in a discussion.
Yeah, just bring them in.
Whether you sale or lease or
Or nothing.
Like when, when he called me there, it was actually just on my way home, like those four, those that stuff goes all the way to none of it. I guess he has to make it now, and the only time they can get it in there is in the wintertime when the roads are frozen. And he needs storage place and he said, he, like, his first thing was lease, buy, whatever. Council's open and he looked at, showed me that pile there. I said, well, I thought it was black dirt. He said, no. Emil sold him or council sold him some granular fill. It's not the best, but enough to level the back end where you could put just acres and acres of these forms in there. They take up a lot of room.
Not gonna say it's not in the building.
What's that?
They just lay outside?
Yeah, oh, he's got acres and acres and they, they have to house it until the semis can, and the rail cars can take it north. So he, at the end of the day, he just wants to see what is what does he have to offer us and maybe we can get a nice lease out of it. Personally, what I'd like to, I mean, we can ask him about that, maybe we can get concrete by those dumpsters, like exactly what Shane was talking there yesterday. Our public works supervisor, maybe they can do it. They are a contractor.
So the motion is to agree to engage in discussions?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
No, we'll leave that up to the CEO to get a hold of him. I'd like the administration to be in contact with him, to set up a meeting late afternoon four o'clock or something, four fifteen, just to, can be a Zoom meeting, nothing.
You'd have to ask something else to actually do some sort of other.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, this is just to, I'm looking at an opportunity for us to gain something, either as paths, make it safer out there for maybe a one, two, three, five year lease. Okay, well, there's the motion. Why don't we, I'll call for the question, just to engage in a talk, and then we'll get up to the CEO to reach out to him. Now, all in favor? Carry it.
Whereas RM now Incorporated has requested trying, tying into an existing fiber lines within the Arm of Cornwallis of three locations.
Actually, two, sorry.
Two locations, therefore be resolved, the Council of the Arm of Cornwallis approve RM now's incorporated request to expand their fiber lines that tying to the existing fiber on the north side of Road Forty Nine North for a connection in Brandon South and tying to existing fiber and continuing north along the west side of Road Ninety Seven West to service a customer near Spruce Woods.
I'll second the motion. Okay, anybody have any questions? Straightforward. All in favor? Carry it. Take a break for a second. Okay, eleven point one one.
I'll make the motion. I think we're on the right one here.
Yep.
Second welling?
Yep, eleven one.
I'll make the motion whereas Robert and Stephanie Kirkshanks have applied for second welling on their property to accommodate day-to-day activities of the firm. Therefore be it resolved that the council, the RM Cornwallis hereby approve the second welling application for northeast thirty one nine eighteen west.
Second, Counselor Mike's all. Any questions? Questions? All in favor? Carry it. Eleven point one two.
So this was the additional agenda item of the Brandon Hill Cemetery Grant Request. So I guess the resolution would be just be resolved that the council approved the request of one thousand two hundred fifty dollars to Brandon Hill Cemetery or?
I would make the motion that we accept the request from the Brandon Hill Cemetery for twelve hundred and fifty dollars for the grant money.
Okay, can I have a second?
Yep.
Counselor Ron.
So just accept and approve the request, right?
Now, would that be part of the two thousand twenty three, oh, yeah.
We have a cemetery mowing budget a little bit, so some of it would kind of fit into that line, but we kind of tapped out of Recreation and Cultural Grant Budget Line already.
I'm just rebooting here, sorry. Just give me a second here. Yeah, okay. We're gonna move on a second. Any questions? All in favor? Yeah, carry it.
Mister Chairperson, I'm just wondering if we can do inquiries, notice of motion before we go on camera?
Yeah, absolutely. I was just gonna suggest that because of the, yeah, okay. Does anybody have any inquiries?
I, I do, Mister Chairperson. In January of two thousand nineteen, Resolution Twenty nineteen thirty nine, there was a request from the Environmental Health Committee to review options and possibilities to proceed with wastewater management for the village of Chader. In May of two thousand nineteen, Resolution Twenty nineteen one oh one, the, the, there was a resolution to ratify the award of Phase One feasibility determination of Chader and Spruce Woods wastewater collection system to self-managing. In November of two thousand twenty, full year and a half later, Resolution Twenty twenty two forty four, the design works for the wastewater system was awarded or was entered into, and you know, here we are, three, almost four years later, and you're just completing that now. So this entire process has taken four to five years so far. Previous council had multiple discussions about wastewater systems, which included Chader and Spruce Woods. The feasibility study was done, moved forward. But the, this council or previous council only moved forward with a project for Chader. Once all the lots in Chader are sold, there's no more room for, for any other dwellings to be added to that lagoon. And what my question is, is when will this council consider, you know, expanding or creating another lagoon that could benefit future development in Chader as well as existing and future development in Spruce Woods, Cotton Woods, and perhaps even Douglas? I just want to also point out, Mister Chairperson, that this is something that you personally campaigned on, was to, was to create a Spruce Woods, or sorry, a wastewater management system for the community of Spruce Woods.
Yeah, actually, Derry, the dates you've got there, I'll go back. I think Spruce Woods had at least two studies done, dating back, I'm gonna say at least ten, maybe even twelve years. JR Cousins did one, Dan Burns did one. And JR Cousins did one for Chader, so did that Southern. It seemed like these projects, and I totally agree with you. You get going, all of a sudden, there's, seems like if council, if nobody pushes it, they just become stagnant. Spruce Woods, I will say, we did a lot of work. Dan Burns did a lot of work. We had a piece of property located pasture land, right, close to the gravel pits, close to actually the city lagoons. We engaged, actually, they did test results. We've got the clay test results. It came back. Dan wasn't overly happy. We, when they first got down, they thought we were in the clay, great, great location. The test results came back, we need a synthetic liner. He came to council, informed us. He says, you're gonna need a synthetic liner. Move that lagoon closer to Spruce Woods then, because synthetic liner is big money. And I agree, I campaigned on it. I still believe with the CEO leaving interim CEOs in place, Jordan, hopefully we'll get him up to speed. We need to get Dan back into the building and sit down because Dan did suggest there's multiple vacant gravel pits there. If you need a synthetic liner, let's, we need to procure a piece of property. That's the, the next step. Dan advised council, we need to procure a piece of property for Spruce Woods, okay? For Chader, yes, Chader, we started that twelve years ago, finally got it going, and the finish line hopefully is in October.
Well, that's my point, Mister Chairperson, is that this is not a, 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 a short process to follow. It's very time consuming and it takes years. And costs are going to spiral out of control even more in, in three to five years, so the time to start acting is now.
Mister Ross, I totally agree. Why don't we inform the CEO to for an hour, get Mister Burns back in there, because he's got all that information and we have it on our screens to get, re-engage in what can we do in Spruce Woods. You're right, I'm in total agreement. It's gonna take years to procure a piece of property and then get the licensing before you spend any money. It's, it's too long of a process. That community needs something and.
I've, I've lived there since nineteen seventy one and the community existed one before that, so.
I agree, I, yeah, so if, if councils agree, I know it's an inquiry, can you?
I can supply a little bit of information too. An alternative method is council's past resolution requesting financial and technical service from Manitowoc Services Board, then it gets you into the queue, but the Manitowoc Water Services Board would be managing the project and doing all the engineering and it wouldn't be Burns. We'd supply them with the existing information, but.
To have, to have everybody know, we had money for Spruce Woods Collection. Yeah, probably twenty some years ago. Of course, and so we're ready, Water Services wanted the money back.
So what, what we found with, what we found with Water Service Board, yeah, they'll do it. They manage it, but they're quite a bit more money. They're extended. What we need to do, I think the first thing we need to do is find out the best property. Is it anybody? Find out where that property is. Then approach that property owner. Are you willing to give up that property? Then you can say, okay, is it just Spruce Woods, Douglas, Chader, whatever, but I think right now the next step, and we've got a lot, a lot of work has been done. He's got it sized and everything. So I'm saying, I think if we can sit down with Dan and just say, where is there obviously gonna be the ones requesting the license, in his opinion, where is the best location? And you have to be mindful, there's residents out there, the further you stay away from them, the less risk. Red tape, just so you're aware, Counselor Ross, they tried for years going north towards the slough. One property owner, I think they tried ten years to get him in here, I think it was Mister Loewen. We couldn't even get him to the table or to acknowledge a letter from the CEO, we'd like to talk to you. So I think we went a different direction and went towards the, the clay and the gravel pitch. Now, I, I'd like to set up a one-hour meeting with Dan and say, okay, Burns, what have you got to offer? You've got all that information. What should be our next step? I know funding, Water Service Board will want to know a number and Dan's got that, like the, how many households? You know, for, for Spruce Woods.
Yeah.
There's no opportunities with Chader, like to.
We've tried.
We, we tried, because they've got, they've got empty cells there.
Yeah.
But it seems like every time you get in, there's a commander change.
Yeah, and nobody in Ottawa wants to sign off on it. It'd be multiple, oh, uh, I'm pretty sure Scotty did, former Marie McIntosh. He had a meeting with him. Reg had meetings, Heather, and I think Kurt. It's just, it seems like you're just wasting time and years. If you think that's a, this is, I'm disappointed how long it takes for some of these projects to get going, you know, but that's a great inquiry there. But for the Chader, at the end of the day, I mean, the finish line is closing.
That, that, that's good. My, my point was, you know, that the process started for both locations at the same time, but for some reason Chader got way ahead.
And actually, the reason for that, we'd be probably in the same boat, Meadowbrook, built their lagoon. Built their lagoon and actually was the engineer, Dan Burns, called a meeting and said, we got an opportunity here. If you want to piggyback, extend it and council put in four hundred thousand.
Agreed, but there's been no chatter about Spruce Woods ever since.
Oh, I, I'd love to get it going, if we can get the CEO, and I went last year, everything's been on, on hold. And a complaint was filed against me about that Spruce Woods, that put a little bit of a damper. I tried to speed up the process, but I got a complaint filed against me at the end of the day to, that overstepped my boundaries, but that's. At the end of the day, the, that overstepped my boundaries, but that's, I I did my best, what's best.
Chairperson, I know we scare a little whatever, but I just wanna.
So that's the inquiry, where inquiry is here. So at the end of the day, uh, let's uh what's that? Have the C E O set up a meeting? Are you okay with that? Set up a meeting with Dan Burns? I'd like to get it going. And we also need a report from, I know you didn't include the council, uh where he is with the water study in that's something we've assigned him to do it, I wanna, and then at the same time, we need to talk the gray road. I know you didn't bring it up, but that's those are things that now that the C E O has two employees, you can
Yeah.
you know, knock off some of these action items, you know, that water studies, in my opinion, is equally important. There's a yeah, you have anything else here? I just got one inquiry, um, have we got a list of, I was driving around here quite a bit in few areas. Do the Public Works Department give you a list of trees that on intersections like blind spots, just some of the trees, maybe get the public tour supervisor just to maybe.
Counsel would have to pass a revolution for that. Well, we've got over two hundred miles of road, and now you want us going around intersections and measuring the distance of tree lines?
Measure trees, it's like, like safety concerns, like to wherever they're put, so it's a budget item for two thousand and twenty.
It's complaint activity, it seems.
Well, no, no, but when I see it, like.
The province doesn't do anything until there's complaint about it, and then.
So what do I have to do?
The greater of Public Works, they all know where these are.
But there's a couple of bad ones there, and like I say, is there action items?
On private property or?
No, on ours, they're in our ditches. Like a a real bad one is, in my opinion, if you drive down there, is Curtis Road and Lori Road, like coming down the hill. It just needs trimming, not removing trees, just limbs. It's almost like the same situation Gray Road had. But that was a province issue, but there's, eventually they're gonna catch up to us. All I'm saying is, we could have ten or twelve a year, just cut the limbs off so there's better accessibility or like visual, like it's safety.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a stop sign there, yeah.
You do, but it's still a plain corner. You stop it.
Yeah, okay.
I I'm just wondering, we should start making, thinking of two thousand and twenty-four budget items to start. We had one last year and the property owner actually had to do it himself. Mister Keller himself had to go and he emailed the, the office and he took it upon himself and just went and mowed it down. Is that right? But not saying it's right or wrong, but to me, when it's a safety issue, just cut the limbs and be done with it. Yeah, that's fine.
Well, we'd have to contract that out. You'd have to contract, right? We don't have any, we don't have their equipment, do we? I haven't seen any.
Like in prior years, we'd either rent a, a small backhoe with the grinder on it from region, but they're not in business anymore. We always have a twenty thousand set aside for trimming or needed be, needed to be, so, or a bobcat with a brush mower. We did them things when it was not as busy, you know, coming end of October into November.
Oh, I don't recommend removing the trees, Bob, but like actually one is out here in the area there, Counsel Ross, Cody Drive and there's, they were hanging over, it took forever. And the property owner, it just like if the, even the police, the constable, just make a checklist and say, hey, in the fall or for next year, just go cut the limbs off, and they did out in Cody Drive. And it was a lot better. When it starts becoming a safety issue.
We've got one at Seventeenth Street East, uh Kalanworth, maple trees hang out over uh farm equipment have to kind of pull onto their own side of the road to get past them. It's going up a hill, so it's kind of a, a safety issue.
A challenge, I think.
Well, it's just some public works does know about that.
Yeah, okay.
Hey, I'll part it along to them about trees and growth and ditches on useful property for visual safety issues.
If they notice it, just kind of mark it out somewhere.
Well, exactly, that's all I. Yeah. Intersection visibility. Yeah. And anywhere, as I observed one today, I'll phone Hydro myself. The the Hydro line is running right through, and I'm thinking, well, Hydro, I think we'll do them for free.
Yeah, Hydro eventually.
Yeah, they will, well, yeah. That's not our cost, I'll, I'll pawn them off to, but I left her the.
What's that? I left her the tree there on my yard.
Was there, why? That's all I've got for inquiries. Anybody else? Inquiries? Yeah, okay. Uh notice of motion.
No, I'm provided in that.
Okay, and I guess we'll back up to an eleven point one three point one, go on camera. Oh, sorry, eleven point one three. So we'll.
Be resolved in accordance with the municipal Act section one fifty two, three, B two, three and four. Also, does anybody call for me to move in camera? Uh eight thirty five.
Okay. Second, word in camera.
Thank you, Mister, we'll give me the opportunity to say something.
Yep. There's a demagoguery.
I know where it requires, I can read.